Just to make sure that everybody has the information. Things have been moving and changing very quickly. And so we want to update you on primarily where we were, where we're going, and solicit some input from you. But also make sure that you understand as a community what you can do to help the commissioners if there's certain routes that you want to remain open that are currently scheduled for closure. So with that, just want to talk a little bit about process. The Mason County Board of Commissioners, ever since John and I came on the board, have been talking about this Resource Management Plan. We've been at the table. We also received 1,800 signatures on a petition asking us to keep roads open. And we take our constituents' input very seriously. And so we've worked with many user groups. I know there's that common misconception that we're only working with motorized or only working with hunters or different groups. We are taking comments from all people. And even from people who believe that the Resource Management Plan is good and that roads should be closed. And there are some of those people in our community. So we are taking input from everyone and being able to relay that to BLM. And so a few months back, the county solicited what we called vested interest recreational routes. Routes that were really important to the community, that had recreational value in some way, shape, or form with different user groups. And so we received about 1,484, as far as miles, of roads that this community identified as being important as vested interest routes. Of those routes, 1,091 are not scheduled to be closed. So that's about 74 percent. And then there are 393, about 26 percent, that were scheduled to be closed. Some of them were scheduled to be closed because they were wildlife emphasis areas, wilderness study areas, areas of critical environmental concern. There's, I know to some people of interest is the Castle Rocks area in Dibek. And so that is potentially being closed, and I'll let BLM go more into this, as a tribal spiritual area. And then there are some miles on the Sarlacc. I don't understand what that is, but I'm sure there are people in this room who view. Where 11 miles was closed, but 11 miles was reopened or will be reopened and rerouted. So they're taking those in at wash. And then there's 79 miles that we have no legal access to. So they're behind private property. And so BLM needs to close those so that they do not encourage trespass. And they can go into their reasonings a little bit more. As you all know, the Mason County Commissioners, when the plan came out, we filed a protest, timely protest. We asked the Governor's Office for help. Originally, there was some discrepancy as to what type of help they were willing to give us. But they have now come to the table with BLM to help us to resolve some of these issues. So of the 393 miles of routes that were scheduled to be closed, after lots of discussion and meetings with BLM, BLM has offered to defer, so not close, not make any decisions really, on about 207 of those 393 routes. And so those will be deferred for us to be able to talk through at a later time, submit comments and protest. And so that leaves about 180 miles roughly. I didn't actually subtract it out, but that's roughly the amount of miles that we have that are subject to closure that I really, at this point, want to focus on for today's town hall. We've got maps in the hall if you haven't seen it. The maps show the 393 that are scheduled to be closed, proposed to be closed. They also are showing the 180 that will be proposed to be closed now. And then the 207 roughly miles of road that will be deferred that we will have an opportunity to talk to, talk about at a later time. And so originally, we were asking BLM for an extension of six months to give the community an opportunity to articulate why these routes need to remain open or these miles of routes need to remain open. BLM is not in a position necessarily to give us that six-month extension. And so their compromise to us was to defer that 207 miles and give us more time, even probably more time than six months, to talk through why those routes need to remain open. So the commissioners have not made a formal decision on that yet. But that, BLM has come to the table to work with us as a community to talk about these routes in more detail at a later time. Now, that doesn't mean we should be forgetting about that. I don't want you leaving this meeting thinking that we've saved those routes because we haven't. We just needed to talk about it in more detail later. What will be really helpful for us as commissioners is if you can come to us with information. So if you have been riding on this route since 1940 and you've got historical information, historical data to show that, that would be good information for the Mason County Commissioners to have. We do have some resources. We have staff on Tuesdays and Thursdays at our planning office. And they are willing to take information, to talk through the closed routes, and show you the maps. Because I know that right now online, it can look a little bit confusing. We have worked with BLM and they've been great at accommodating us to change their maps, to make it more user-friendly. So hopefully you can be able to go either on the Mason County website or the BLM website to take a look at these routes and see which ones are being closed. And we'll say, from a Mason County Commissioner perspective, at this point, it is hard for us to articulate why a certain road should or should not be closed. That's why we need the community to give us feedback and say, "We need this route opened, and this is why." And this way, we can articulate that to the BLM. Once the Record of Decision on this Resource Management Plan comes out, there will be a 30-day appeal period. And the county will be working to the extent we can on a potential appeal. But we want to make sure that we've got the information. And that's where the community comes. If you want these roads closed, come to us with information. If you want them open, come to us with information. We really have gone as far with county resources as we can at this point on research. And so I want to give you just a little bit more background. Of the county vested interest roads, not recreational routes, but roads that were important to Mason County, there was 167 miles, and they're only closing five. And some of that was discrepancies on the county's maps and wilderness study area and some redundant roads. So we made out pretty well with that. And then of the county maintained roads, there are 246 miles, and all of those have been kept open. So just so that you know though, while we are focused on the vested interest routes, that's what the community has identified as important. BLM is closing between Mason County and Garfield County, 852 miles. And then 250 for administrative. These were not routes we're focused on because they were not brought to us as important to the community to keep open. So just so that you understand, there's a lot of categories of these miles of routes. And we're trying to work through as much as we can. But again, we're going to need the community to help us in order to do that. We do appreciate the Governor's Office being here. There is a representative, and I'll have him talk at the end about the Governor's rule and all this. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Justin and then Commissioner McGinnis to give their comments.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad all of you came down to the meeting and hopefully can look at the maps on a step trip.
Aloha.
Since I've been here, it seems like we've worked on travel management from the second week we were here. And 72 to 75 percent of Mason County is federal lands. I don't have the exact percentage for the BLM. So the big majority of our county is federally owned. And we do know and understand that all of these routes are very important to all of you, whether you want to hike, or you want to mountain bike, or ride your ATV, or the Jeep. I've been in Mason County for, what, over 50 years? And I have not been on every road, but I've been in a lot of areas from the Dibek down to the southern part of Mason County to Mesa. So a lot of the routes I do know, but I guarantee I have never been on all. One of the comments on one of the other meetings, and it was not necessarily with the BLM office here, but their statement was, "They didn't have ATVs. They weren't real popular until the late 80s." Well, that's true. But I can remember in the 60s, there was an awful lot of Jeeps parked in a lot of people's driveways. And I look at some of the old CJ2 Jeeps. They're not really any bigger than some of the new four-seater ATVs. So a different category of vehicle, but nonetheless, they used a lot of these roads. And I did a lot of hunting out of a CJ2 Jeep, long before four-wheelers were ever even imagined. Also, it was amazing to me, in the 60s, dirt bikes were kind of new to me. I had a Harley. I didn't know much about dirt bikes. And but when I came down to Grand Junction, and they were riding by the airport with dirt bikes in the early 60s. And I never really got into that. That's a real popular sport today. And it's evolved into much different equipment than they had in those days. But nonetheless, those gray hills out there by the airport, dirt bikes were making dust for many years out there. So that's nothing new. The commissioners, as we work through this thing, we actually hired a consultant twice to help us with putting together our comments to the BLM, which I think was beneficial to us, and explain how common, why we should be doing this and that. And a lot of our road people put a lot of hours in. Keith Feith and it was Keith Hordle did a lot of work on it. And Rudy Bevins, they did a lot of work on us. So our staff did a lot of work also. So here we are today. It's probably better than I looked at one point a few weeks ago. But we still have a lot of work to do. And we're going to need your input to try and facilitate these 207 routes that they say are disputed, that how many we can keep open. I can't honestly answer that today. But we do need your input. We've got a good turnout of people. And hopefully, as we work through this thing, we can be successful at keeping more routes open. Thanks.
Thank you all for attending tonight. I think John hit the point right on the button. We're seeking input. So tonight, as you can see by the crowd that we've got, it's not a rally. We're not looking for an argumentative meeting where we're going to take on the BLM or something like that. Tonight is purely fact-finding, trying to get from the people that know best. As John said, he's been on a lot of these trails, but he hadn't been on every trail. Some of you in this room may have been on a remote trail, or your grandpa, your grandma used this trail, or you knew that this is where you moved cattle, or this is how you got down to the river. Those facts are the ones we're trying to dig out. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is really kind of a fact search. So to accommodate the size crowd that we've got, I think it would probably be polite if what you've said has already been said. We're taking note of it. And so, as a courtesy to other people that would like to speak, it's already been said. Let us move on to somebody that's got something that's new to us. And also, if you can, again, this is not where we want to go into long theoretical policy arguments. This is, please come up, give us any information you think we may not have on our hands. That's really what we have on that tonight, Madam Chair. And of course, our chairwoman's going to run the meeting. But other than that, you both have covered everything. We really didn't come here, have you come here to hear us. We asked you to come here and help us with these facts. This is one of the few opportunities we're going to have to reach out and pull this kind of stuff in. By the way, I want to acknowledge our elected officials. Very thanks for coming on. You've been key on this, Sheriff. I'm sure we've got some other announcements. Appreciate the BLM, but I really appreciate the kind of turnout. I wish, if we've got handicapped or somebody elderly or something, maybe seat a couple here. I might be getting my seat up if somebody needs to sit. But it's great turnout, but we don't have too big accommodations. Madam Chair?
Well, thank you to both Commissioner Justin and Commissioner McGinnis. So at this point, I do want to reiterate that really what we're looking for is information tonight on these routes. We will have comment sheets that you can fill out with your name and information on specific routes. And again, our staff is available Tuesdays and Thursdays to have one-on-one meetings with constituents to talk about individual routes and the information that they may provide that could help the county in discussions with BLM. So at this point, I want to bring up BLM. Joe, are you going to be speaking?
I think a lot of people will.
Wayne? Okay. So Wayne Ortmeister from the local office of BLM, I guess, will be the first person, or not, to speak. Somebody from BLM will be speaking, I assure you. And I think they also have some maps and information that they're trying to get loaded on.
First of all, we wanted to thank the county for inviting us to give a kind of brief preview of where we've been since this thing began and give a little bit of BLM's story here. So with that, go ahead, Michelle. We're talking about the Grand Junction Field Office. What's outlined here in the black line. It includes just over a million acres, surface acres of BLM land that's in the brown. So we thought it important for those people that may have not have been engaged through the whole process to understand that the Resource Management Plan is a document that is kind of the visionary document for the management of about 1 million acres for the next 20 years. So it's this 30,000-foot view of how we're going to take care of this land with the public's and cooperating agencies' input for the next 20 years of the foreseeable future. It determines the appropriate multiple uses of that area. And just for your information, the vast majority is in Mesa and Garfield Counties. And our goal in this plan is to try to create a balance that provides for the resource uses and the resource conservation of the area. And this particular Resource Management Plan also includes an appendix, which is a travel management plan. That's an implementation-level decision that's included in probably the majority of the reason the most of you are here.
Just to give you a little bit of background, the BLM started the travel planning process along with the Resource Management Plan around 2008. We started collecting data at that time about our inventory of other resource data. We started at that time as well, collecting information from the public. We started in 2008, having R and P Resource Management Plans helping meetings in three new areas, Grand Junction, Colburn, and Moab. We hosted travel management workshops, five or six of those, with over 200 participants. We had two separate travel management comment periods in between developments, starting the process and developments in the draft. The reason all that's important is because the BLM was only required to do two things. And that is to have R and P public scoping meeting at the beginning of the process, and then a comment period during the draft. The BLM in this community in Grand Junction really saw the value of incorporating the community's involvement and reaching out to the community and finding out not only what inventory was out there, but also what the community valued about those travel networks that are currently on our public lands, giving them informed decisions. So after the comment period for the travel, or for the draft R and P, we extended the travel, we extended the comment period for 60 days. It was a total of 150 days, and posted five open houses, again, only required to one. We also had travel management community meeting in Grand Junction down at Two Rivers. We had travel management training for community leaders so that we could better inform our constituents and be better engaged in the process. We have full host of information available on our websites, presented information in Google Earth, and provided presentations at all of our YouTube rooms. We also work closely with Mason County to develop training videos to help folks navigate all of this information and all the documents so that they can be more informed again and also provide us with meaningful comments throughout the process. Operating Agency involvement has been significant since the beginning of this process. I think as Rose pointed out very well at the beginning, Mason County, Prudential, Grand Junction, Calisay, Colburn, all those entities have been very much involved. They have been sitting at the table with us as we work through our travel plan in particulars. So the cooperators sat down with us and set representatives to sit down with us and talk through all of the uses, values associated with the routes. The draft plan took about five weeks to get through the route designations. And then the final plan took about seven weeks to get through the designation. So the cooperators have put a ton of their time and some of their effort into this process.
Is there a microphone you can use, Michelle?
Yeah. Is it not loud enough?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I apologize. A lot of folks talk with us about authority and guidance for travel planning. A couple of things that I think is important for folks is 43 CFR, which is Code of Federal Land Regulations. We are required to have all designations be based on the protection of the resources of public lands, the promotion of safety of our users, and to minimize conflicts among users. That comes up a lot in discussions with the public. The other thing that comes up a lot is RS 2477. And that's not, this is not the time to talk RS 2477, although as the county commissioners are posting information that will help them pursue this. The travel management planning is not intended to address the validity of the RS 2477 assertions. Slow rights are determined through a process that's entirely independent from the BLM's process. And I think the county commissioners will speak for that later. Travel planning is a tool for us. It's a tool to achieve not only the laws that we spoke of just a second ago, but also to achieve our Resource Management Plan objectives. We received between the draft and final about 1,500 public comments. And in addition to those, we had more from the initial scoping. We carefully considered all of those in our final decisions. We are looking to balance access with resource protection, safety, and recreational enjoyment. And this is, travel planning is also an ongoing process that will take place throughout the life of this Resource Management Plans.
We wanted to highlight just an example of some of the stuff we're talking about when we're talking about the routes out there. This particular area on the screen is down by Gateway. And up there in the upper left corner, you can see the county gateway. So it's all that Mason country up above there. Blue Mesa, Bull Mesa, Calamity Camp is up in there. And the area we're highlighting here is just to emphasize that when we went out and started doing our inventory on the routes, we was trying to be as transparent and open as possible, documenting every route that's out there. Now, the areas that are highlighted in red, you probably have a hard time finding them if you was driving down that black road. And the map on the right is showing you that the areas highlighted in red are showing us closed. And the reason we're doing that is since we've put them in the database, it's really important, or we don't have any choice, we have to designate them. You might notice that from the black line to the edge of the red there, it's maybe a quarter of a mile from that scale down at the bottom. So when you're on the black line, you're very close to the rim in that country. So even though there's six miles of red routes that are being closed, it's not really limiting the access to public lands down there. We did provide the access to the areas on the points and feel like there's still really good access for the public to a Mason like this. And it's just merely an example to emphasize some of that.
So in the travel plan, you'll see that open in open areas, we have 290 miles of routes that are available to the public, limited to administrative or primitive uses, about 260. No legal public access, about 334. And as Rose pointed out, about 852 miles of routes that are closed. So of the total 4,000 miles of routes, you'll see that they're designated in that way. Limited designations also include routes that are open to foot and horse travel, routes that are just limited to motorcycles or ATV with, and that sort of thing. Also, in our travel plan, we went an extra step. In a lot of cases where we had, for example, the legal access, we wrote into the plan that we wanted to have legal access. We would work with our partners, we would work with landowners to get that access for the public. And when that occurred, those routes would be open beyond that private land to the general's networks. So the next step in our planning process, as you guys are well aware, we're about to sign our Record of Decision for the Resource Management Plan. And the travel decisions are all embedded into the Resource Management Plan. They're labeled as implementation-level decisions. Implementation-level decisions are separate from the general R and P decisions. And so what happens at this point is it starts what's called an appeal process. And the appeal process is available for the public or cooperators and partners to appeal to IBLA. There's a fact sheet available to you in this room about that process. And I'm not sure where those ended up.
It's in the back.
In the back. To help walk you through that process, how it works. And that's how you would dispute with the BLM route-specific decisions. So the other thing that's going to happen next is the deferred routes that we're talking about tonight, they will undergo another analysis process. So we'll have to select all those routes. You're required to make a decision on them. So we'll have to make a decision at some point soon. We'll take those routes and we'll probably create an environmental assessment and potentially an environmental impact statement to make the designation on those routes. And again, that'll be, there'll be a public process that will be involved in either one of those documents that makes those decisions. BLM will continue to seek the cooperating agency participation like we have through out the developments of this R and P and for the continued revision of the travel plan. Again, the travel plan will be updated every time we build a new trail or we make a change in designation. The other next thing that will happen is we will start implementing our Resource Management Plan. Within our Resource Management Plan, we have about a quarter of our field office in recreation management areas where we specifically focus on recreation, trail-based recreation, motorized recreation in our field office. We also have a lot of new trail proposals that have been sitting on the shelf, waiting for this travel plan to be finished so that we can get moving on those. And of course, our continued commitment to working with the community on trail-based recreation.
Is it okay if I just pull in over there? I can't see anybody from sitting down. So if I can go through really transparent red, yeah, that would be great. Can everybody hear me back there? Haven't had a chance to meet mostly yet. My name is Joe Meyer. I'm the District Manager here in northwest Colorado, Hoover Valley, in September last year. So still learning the area, but I have a long career with BLM and have dealt with these sort of issues many times over the last 30 years. Know that we're focused on trying to find solutions for our partners to work with the public, to get things that are good for public lands, which the public wants to use public lands. And I think we get too focused on the negative at times and not focus on our successes. If you saw, it kept up with these numbers. We started out with 4,000 miles of roads. And the discussion we ventured into with the county in the last week is over 393 miles out of 4,000 miles. I think we've been pretty successful in getting a plan that pretty well works for a lot of folks. It's important we don't lose sight of that success. Let's get those things moving forward and get them on the ground and find a way to resolve these differences we still have. So out of the 393 miles that we're in question yet of these routes that the county brought to our attention that the public has a lot of interest in for recreation purposes, what are the ones left that I'm having a little bit of trouble deferring? We went through those 393 miles as best we could. Out of that, we promised at least 207 miles of those that we think we can put the decision off until later. I think when we got through the final number, crunching, we had about 209 miles that we think we can defer, we can deal with those decisions later. So that leaves about 184 miles now out of 4,000 miles that we still want to get some additional input on and see what we can work out. What are those 184 miles? 79 of those 184 miles, almost half of them, are routes that have no legal public access. And I can't leave a route open on BLM as a legal route that forces the public to trespass across by plants. It's not a good decision for me to make. It puts the burden on that private landowner to have to control that access to those routes. Now, in our plan, as Michelle just pointed out, that at the time we get legal public access across those private lands, those BLM routes will open back up. So that's 80 more miles that sometime in the future we'll be able to work with and get open to the public. There's about 58 miles total that we have significant cultural resources concerns on. Most of those are in the Castle Rock area. We've gone through a long process of consultation with the Native American tribes. That's a government-to-government relationship that we're required to go through by law. They've brought to our attention a lot of areas that hold important sacred significance to them. And they're being banished on the ground. And for right now, until we find a solution and find a way to move those routes, to adjust those routes, I have to take some action to protect their sacred areas. So that's about 58. So that's about 58 miles of the total. There's 29 miles of roads that are within our areas of critical environmental concern. Those are areas where we typically have threatening endangered plants or other species where we have some sort of habitat protection in place required by law that prevents me from causing direct damage to D and E species. There's 11 miles, something we talked about earlier, I think Commissioner Rose, in the Sarlacc Trail. We've already built a new trail. We've built a new trail and it's open to the public. So there's 11 miles of the old trail that we're going to close. There is no loss to the public in access or use of that trail. The new trail's on the ground, people are using it, they really like it. So we've got to close the old. And the last pieces are seven miles within wilderness study areas. And the wilderness study area designations, wilderness area designations are made by Congress. And there are laws that I have to follow related to wilderness study areas that prevent me from allowing, until Congress determines otherwise, I have to manage the lands according to the Authority Act and cannot authorize anything that will pervert the suitability of such areas for preservation of wilderness. It's not a law I wrote, it's a law I have to implement as we enter the public's plans. So that was the last seven miles. So those are the miles that are left between the 393 miles that we started talking about and what we've already something to defer. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what those pieces are and kind of got to that point that talked about earlier is what is that information that we can get on specific routes that can help us, because this is kind of what I have left on the plate. So thanks for that, and I think we'll bring it back to Commissioner.
Did you want a quick review of the tools to do some reviews on this?
Sure. We could show you real quickly how you can get in and look at all these individual routes online, see which routes are open and closed. And I would strongly encourage all of you who are here tonight to look at those maps. Wayne gave the one example of six miles of roads in a very small area that's closed, but there was full public access on motorized routes to get in there. Look at the maps and find your favorite places you'd like to go and look to see if that road that you usually drive on is open in the plan. Because I think there's a pretty good likelihood that most of the areas you go, there's a way to get in there with motorized vehicles. Take a look at those maps while you can, through the tools that are available to help meetings soon.
For those of you who access to the internet, I just want to give you a quick overview of what's available to you. Of course, the maps are available here as well, but there's a way that you can access that same information and maybe a little bit of a user-friendly way. I usually just do a Grand Junction BLM RMP search, and the first thing that comes up is this webpage right here. At that point, click on travel management, and the travel management overview and some of the historic documents and things that we've used throughout the plan. Where you go from here is to the 2015 final travel management maps. As pointed out, we've put the county recreation routes of importance, the ones that we've been talking about tonight, 393 miles of routes right up front, so you can have access to that with a PDF map or the KMC files, which are the files that upload directly into Google Earth, which provides you with a whole bunch of information real quickly. We also have a specific route report, so you can look at each route and determine what resource concerns are out there, what a rationale was for making the decision, and what public comments we have based on each one of those routes, so it gives you all that information in one place. And then also, a little bit more about the rationale for not deferring some of the routes that Joe was just talking about. So all that's available on our website. The other thing that you can do, if you're interested in just the general travel management information outside of this 393 miles, is you can upload all this data into Google Earth and look at it that way, or you can, you know, use PDFs and other maps that are available to you. When you're in Google Earth, it looks similar to this, the designations are different colors. You can click on each one of these routes, and it'll give you a little bit of information like this is Route 01756, and the designation for that route is admin. You can also look, see if we have any litigation concerned with that route, and then get into the route report that way. And this is what the route report looks like, which provides you with all of the detailed information. So again, a lot of information, but hopefully, we've worked really hard to try and make it as user-friendly as possible, considering all of the data that we had available to present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate BLM coming today and explaining what they've done and showing us the maps. Again, for those of you who are not maybe as technological, we will have those physical maps at our planning office. People can come in and sit down one-on-one and talk about individual routes that are important to them. So don't feel that if this is too confusing that you can't participate in this process because you can't. So one of the things that comes up a lot is jurisdiction. Does federal government even have jurisdiction over these lands? And so I want to turn it over now to our county attorney, Patrick Coleman, to just talk about some of the discussions we've had on a county level about jurisdiction. And there are chairs up here for people who are...
Good evening. I think the BLM made a very pertinent comment in saying that tonight, we're receiving input, they have a regulatory process that they have to pursue, and that includes resource management planning, the travel management planning, and the designation of these various routes. The county is a cooperating agency, but the commissioners want to certainly go on record that because they are a cooperation, a cooperating agency, they don't necessarily agree with the entire process or even want to acknowledge necessarily that the BLM has jurisdiction over lands that are currently classified as BLM lands in the county or any of the specific roads. The board is working through this process and wants to be a good cooperating agent and help the BLM. Hopefully, through this process, we learn a lot about the various roads and their status. But the board, I think, very clearly wants to go on record tonight and through any possible appeals that may occur in the future with respect to these road designations, that they're not waiving any rights that they may have with respect to challenging the jurisdiction of the BLM or the status of these roads, whether it be under the RS 2477 statute that a lot of you know a lot about or may have heard of, or any other legal basis under which the county may assert a claim or contest a claim by the BLM in terms of jurisdiction. And so we, as a county, we want to just certainly go on record that our participation and our appeal or lack of appeal with respect to a certain road doesn't constitute a waiver of any rights the county may have to contest anything with respect to that road in the future. But we do want to participate in this process and hopefully, come to some at least understanding with the federal agencies and the public and narrow the focus. As I mentioned, there's 4,000 miles of roads. We've kind of narrowed things down. That doesn't mean the county might, through this process, after the regular decision is issued, appeal roads that are not within that, that are not within the 390 miles or even the 207 miles. We may discover information that we believe makes it appropriate to appeal a designation in the next 30 days after the route is issued. And with respect to the deferred designations, we may discover some information that we believe warrants an appeal based on that designation that we're not able to resolve with the BLM. So I think the key point is that, you know, we're participating, but we're not waiving the county's right and the county's obligations under either federal or state law, statutory or common law. And there's a very complicated process that could become involved, and it might involve litigation. We're not pure threatening litigation, but we're certainly reserving the right to pursue through whatever legal means is necessary to enforce the county's rights and by extension, the public's rights in these routes. So I guess I'll just say that. With that, get back to the more positive and cooperative aspect of the meeting, which I think was the intent here.
Thank you, County Attorney Coleman. At this time, I'm going to ask JT Romanski from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, who's representing the governor's office today, to just say a few words.
Thank you, Governor Chair, Messrs. Good to see you guys. It's a great turnout. As Commissioner Pelosi just said, I'm here tonight representing the governor's office, John Sworhout. They've asked me to come tonight and spend a few minutes. There's a couple of different reasons I'm here. One for them, obviously, and just to let everybody know that the governor's office really supports the hard work and diligence that's got us this far into this plan. We think that this is a very sensible solution and path forward on these remaining 209 miles, so we look forward to continuing working to get to everybody's goals and solutions. The other reason I'm here, just representing Colorado Parks and Wildlife, we've been involved in this as a cooperating agency as well, so I'm here tonight to answer any questions. I'll be on the hall or back in the back or wherever you'd like me if you have any questions about wildlife or OHV, park stuff, the trails part of our agency. I'm happy to have those conversations too. But again, just wanted to portray our support for where things have ended up here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, JT. As Commissioner McGinn has said in the beginning, this is less about us talking and more about you talking. We need information from you, and we're asking for your help. So before I open up the public portion of this meeting, I think do want to acknowledge Representative Dan Thurlow in the back. Thank you for being here. So at this point, we're going to invite people to come up to the microphone. If you'll give your name, there's also a sign-up sheet in the back. If you have substantive comments that you need the commissioners to know about particular routes, now is your opportunity to talk to us. That's really what the focus of this meeting needs to be, so that we can do our job to help protect some of these miles of routes that are supposed to be closed. So that's really what our focus is right now. Clearly, it's a town hall, and our commissioners are open to hearing anything that you want to say, so I'm not going to limit you on that. But if we can stay focused, it'll be a more productive meeting. So come on up to the mic. Who wants to get started?
Brandon.
Anybody?
Mind getting up here?
Anybody can get up here.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Is it not on?
How are you?
Hello, hello. Hello, my name is Lee Chalat, a longtime resident in the county, raised a family here, and enjoy hiking, bird watching, and photography. I'm also a member of the Quiet Trails Group, formed in 2011. We share a love of hiking, horseback riding, and mountain biking. We also place a high value on protection of natural and cultural resources. We, Quiet Trail users are a significant percentage of public land users. Specifically, the Bangs Canyon area is very important to us, and the Micah Line Trail can be very crowded almost any day, not just weekends. It's one of the only hiking trails in the area specifically designated for hiking. And we support the BLM's plan, in particular, the southern area of the Bangs Canyon. They're in the travel plan, they're responding and protecting its primitive natural area. And there are a number of routes that need to be closed to do that, and we support that. The Tapawatch Trail, which is a motorized trail that is not being considered to be closed, runs smack through the middle of that, and that's fine. It will get motorized people into the wilderness, and that is the plan, and we support that. In fact, our group is involved in discussions that open up the connection of that motorized route to the Highway 141 on the south end. So we believe that administrative closures for that area, including Route P 219, P 248, P 258, all support the idea of protecting resources, the cultural lands and wilderness characteristics, and wildlife habitat. We also support closing P 251, which is down closer to Highway 141. Also, I'd like to ask the county's help in opening or taking some action to help the BLM regarding Route P 890. This is on the Clark's Bench area, right around Ladder Canyon. If you can help acquire or gain access to that area, it will allow that route to avoid crossing private land. So as a county resident, I hope that you're listening to me and that you support and will speak up for hiking, biking, and horseback riding. Instead of looking backward, if you could look forward and help us develop a wonderful county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up and just talk.
My name's Ron Ariano. I was born and raised here, been in these mountains all my life. I'm an old guy, I'm 75 years old. And I'll tell you what, a lot of these trails that they're closing, old guys like me can't go running out there. We can't, you know, you young guys can go jumping and running and all over the place, but we got to get on those doggone four-wheelers to go hunt, and I'm not going to quit.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right on.
Are you serious? All speakers.
Well, anyway, I want the county commissioners to look at that aspect of it. I mean, all these young folks moving in, that's great, I'm glad to see them. But I'll tell you what, us old guys that have been here, we got a right to those mountains too. And the best way for us to get around with doggone four-wheelers, and I'd like you folks to consider that, keep the BLM from shutting it down. Used to be the BLM was a bunch of regular good old boys, but they're all liberals now that just go out there and shut everything down.
Yeah, yeah, right on.
Thank you for your comments. Wouldn't we hold applause till the end, if you don't mind?
It wouldn't be that fun.
I just want to make sure that we're making this meeting as productive as possible, as many people as possible are able to talk. So Brandon.
I'm Brandon Stinkrey, Director of the Public Land Access Association. You know, we've been working with the county from the get-go on this process, and we actually helped push this idea of expanding our vested interest routes. And that was done because the BLM and their slideshow during the Club 20 meeting and the various other community meetings said that they would not close roads that we had a county interest in. And now we are here, we're focusing on 393 miles of vested interest routes. We're talking like it's a victory, but we're really looking at it to drive a Jeep, about 1,500 other miles of closures, including Masonville County. So I don't think we should be acting like we won some. Based on Mr. Meyer's information today, if we look at all the deferred decisions that we're going to have to wait a year, two, five years for, there's a total of 752 miles of routes that have been deferred, because we can't forget about the 545 miles of routes that's on our, north of town. Also, one area that I wanted to be brought up in this meeting and didn't make it is seasonal closures. Many, if not all, of the seasonal closures are vested interest routes. The BLM proposes or presents them as if they're staying open, but many are going to be closed half the year now. And these are some of the highest-value routes in the valley. And, you know, based on FOIA comments I've seen, scoping period and things like that, a lot of Colorado Parks and Wildlife comments were regarding a lot of these hunting routes as far as for wildlife reasons, they wanted them closed. So I think there's issues there as well. So if we add the 235 miles of seasonal closures, we still have 1,000 miles of routes that we really need to talk about that could be or are going to be closed. And we still have a lot of work to do as far as getting historical RS 2477 information. And we still have a lot of work to do as far as getting historical RS2477 information to the county. To my knowledge, there's never been a congressional act passed that gives any law over areas of critical environmental concern. There have been for wilderness study areas, so the laws they're talking about there are BLM policy. Okay? As a community and as a state, we have to start to look at where our OHV funds are going. Okay? They bring in about $3 million a year to the state. Two million of that is going back to the federal government in the form of OHV grants. 60% of those, actually 62% of those grants say the monies can be used to implement these RMPs. And if you read some of the Attorney General stuff in the state of Colorado over the years, you'll see how they used to back RS2477. And now you can argue when you compare them to Utah, that our OHV funds are being used to close RS2477 routes. So we need to make noise with the state on that. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
I've been in the Grand Valley for about 29 years. I used to hunt a lot. I still shoot a little bit. Not all I really do on public lands anymore, especially once in a while. But I'm very concerned about the overreach of the federal government and in particular, the Bureau of Land Management. Nothing makes me more sick to my stomach than to hear BLM land. BLM land is owned in ECR. They're not authorized to own in ECR. They're authorized to administer. So in my opinion, this is an administration that's run amok. If anybody's familiar with the David Justice trial, that's how everyone's been here at Grand Junction. Concerned guy that opened up what he believed was the illegal restriction to access on BLM lands. And I sat in that courtroom and I listened to the head of the BLM in that district, female about 45, can't remember her name offhand. And she says, "We're going to close what we want to close." And if the county doesn't like it, their only alternative is to sue us in court. So I'd like to ask the county commissioners today, if they're serious about fighting the BLM on this land restriction, what kind of a budget do they have appropriate funds for the county attorney to send the BLM overreach? They're basically taking land over and restricting us by the death of 1,000 cuts. It's how many, eight miles this year? How many miles is it going to be next year and the year after that? They're eating up our public access under the color of a authority of law which they do not have. Constitution doesn't allow for the shutting off of public lands to the public. It's the public's lands. When I look at this sign over here that says Travel Management Plan, I thought I was a free American and I could travel where I wanted to. At least I'd like to ask the commissioners if they don't have the budget.
Hi. I'll need to call you.
The county attorney over here, that he can fully go after these guys when they overstep or they want more lands closed next year. We're not going to get any help from the governor. He's a Democrat, you know? He may get in to pay lip service, when it comes right down to it, to the county sheriff over here or the county commissioners that's going to have to fight the BLM. And I spoke to Matt Lewis the other day personally. He said he's never seen a road that was chained off and he wasn't going to be cutting any blocks off chains on the BLM restrictions. So I don't think we can count on him a whole lot. And he's free to come up here and say some people aren't, but I mean, we were there, five of us, and that's what he told us. So that's all I have to say.
Hello, I'm Jim Cooten, Public Land Riders Motorcycle Club. And we, along with the county, submitted 160 pages of comments in the draft, some of which were taken into a capital file and some were ignored. What you can ignore is what's in the plan. And the analysis of the current situation in the RMP clearly states, resource by resource, that there are no resources at risk under the no action alternative. Meaning, if nothing happens, not a road is closed or open, the resources in the Grand Junction Field Office are not at risk. The streams and the water quality, the air quality, the wildlife, all those things are doing reasonably well. And we don't change anything. I just leave all the routes open. It won't damage any of those. So in the initial phase of the plan, I believe it was between 66 and 70% of the routes were destined for some form of either full year closure or partial closure for seasonal reasons, whatever the reasons were. And if there are no resources at risk under the current situation, what is the policy that the BLM is following nationwide, not just in Mason County? That closes between 60 and 70% of all motorized routes throughout the West? I want an explanation from BLM on where their authority comes from and also what's the rationale for the massive closures of public access, public recreation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Aldrich-Ariano. I'm married to Ron. I've lived in the valley since 1973. And I used to ride horseback all over all of these trails and the roads that we're talking about. I used to ride the frontier belts, sites out of the blue, for number of years. I had some health events that prevent me from getting on the horse or hiking or really in the distance. I live on 35 acres and I can't really enjoy that. The only way that I can enjoy these backcountry areas is either in a four-wheel drive vehicle or sitting behind Ron on four-wheelers. So I am prevented from using these areas. These roads are closed. I cannot hike them. I won't have a way to use them. I am really, really, really tired of all these special groups, the bicyclists, the hikers, the bird watchers, you name it, wanting special privileges. I want a special privilege.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people in this valley who cannot walk very good or hike or get on a horse to get back in these areas. And I'm in retail business, I deal with a lot of these people on a daily basis. I see what their implications are. And they are totally being ignored in this closure of these roads. So I hope that you would consider people who have no other way to get back in these areas for fishing or just enjoying the day, other than on a motorized vehicle of some kind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janice Shepherd. I'm a member of various groups in the valley, including a newly formed group, a chapter of the Colorado Archaeological Society. We've had several meetings that have been hugely attended, overflow crowds, stand-up room only, over 125 people at one. And there are a huge number of people here in the county who vastly want to support the protection of cultural resources. Yes, there was a lot of effort went into building some trails to satisfy motorcycles and mountain bikers and hikers and horse people and very fun trails in the Castle Rock area. But unfortunately, it's turned out to be a hugely spiritual area for the Utes tribe. And much as we would not, I had the privilege of visiting the Battle of Gettysburg field. And much as we don't want a sea of trails through the Battle of Gettysburg, I can understand if there is a spiritual relationship that they have with a particular area, we should respect that. We should respect each other's heritage. We should try to protect our heritage because it's what's important to a lot of our county residents. I personally am a hiker. I do a lot of volunteer work for the BLM. I was a participant in the Grand Valley Trail Alliance Roundtable. That's where different groups come together and try to work on what should be new trails that are appealing to whether it's a hiking trail, a motorcycle trail, an ATV trail. The community comes together, discusses and proposes. The Sarlap Trail is an example of a great group coming, people coming together. I went and helped. I'm not a mountain biker, I'm not a motorcyclist. I can see how they would enjoy that trail, so I wanted to help. And it's, so I think the future is where we can get some really great trails and roads being developed by the BLM. If we can get past this RMP and into the future development, then we can see some great recreation opportunities for all different types of users. Travel management is a huge balance of multiple resources. I attended that management class, Brandon was there. We were part of the same group and we had a little task. We were given some information and said, okay, of all these roads, what are you going to do, given this information? And I'll quote Brandon here. He pointed at one of those roads and goes, "Well, the obvious thing is to close that one." Yes, he said it. And at the time, I teased him and said, "Brandon, at some point, I'm going to quote you." I bet he didn't know it would be in front of so many people. So yeah, some roads need to be closed. I mean, an example was, I was reading in Zone O, there's a reservoir where you need to keep one road open because the bird hunters need to get into the reservoir and set up. But if you leave all the other roads open, there's not going to be any birds there. They're not going to have a good chance of shooting. And so the wildlife guys had submitted a really good comment saying, "Keep this one road open and close the rest." So it's a balance. There's, you've got to balance oil and gas development. It's important to keep people who are off oil and gas pads, so the whole bunch of roads are marked permit E only. And not only is it important to keep most public off the oil and gas pads because there can be leaks, I have unfortunately been on gas pads where there are leaks. And so it's a dangerous situation to get public in there, somebody lights up a cigarette and boom. But it's also, it's up to the oil and gas guys to maintain that road to their pad. And so it's not fair to them if a whole bunch of recreationists drive on that road on a muddy day and leave it a mess so that their workers can't then get in. And that's why it makes sense to designate some roads as being limited to permit and agni. Another example is stock ponds. Raising and cattle raising is a huge economic factor for Mason County. And limiting access to stock ponds helps preserve those stock ponds. Some people unfortunately think it's fun to drive through a stock pond. And that causes damage to the material they sprayed on the stock pond to keep it from absorbing water. And so then it no longer holds water and now the cattle and the wildlife don't have access to water. So I like, I support this notion of a defer, let's move forward and try to see some new recreation coming on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wukuski. Thank you. I just want to say that I support lawful control and decision-making of which routes to keep open and which routes to keep closed. And local control, hopefully, I mean, who better to make those decisions than the people who live here and work here, make their livings here? I know there was a petition circulated by the Public Land Access Association requesting that Governor Hickenlooper not sign the RMP. And I know they collected about 800 signatures. And I was wondering maybe if commissioners or gentlemen representing the governor can comment on what that state is, if the governor's planning to sign it and what's that, what that is looking like? Thank you.
Can someone comment or?
What I think you're talking about, Jeff, is the consistency review. The governor doesn't sign off on the RMP. The consistency review is an opportunity for the governor to say whether the RMP is consistent or inconsistent with state laws or policies. And that was where the governor chose not to comment at all. So Mason County submitted a protest, but the Governor's Office did not submit any comment one way or the other during the consistency review. That is, to my knowledge, and Joe, you can correct me, I think that was basically the only opportunity that the governor has to weigh in on the RMP. I assume he has the same appeal period we do, but I'm not sure that he'll be at all to that.
I thought I, maybe I misunderstood, that if the governor didn't sign off on it, then it would basically put a kibosh on RMP, but I guess that's not right.
His ability to weigh in was during the consistency review and he did not submit comments.
Hi, my name is Keith Van Gravich. I've been at Grand Junction since '06. I am concerned because I love to hike and I used to go shooting out in the desert area. My dad married one of those memories. But I would hate some, a lot of these places closed down because it has sentimental value. Especially me and my mom, my sisters go hiking on the Micah Line Trail. Thank you.
My name is Joe Green. I'm in Mason County for, what, since '64. I've been driving all these routes around here. I believe that Mason County has all the right to keep these routes open. I mean, constitutional law and laws, state and federal. As according to the Glade Park area, where you guys are closing all those areas up there, we're already limited on what we can hunt there because of all the vital land. Right now, you can only hunt lost horses, Brandon Craig, off of Tom's Canyon, Bangs Canyon, the forests up there, Oak Hill, which we used to have a route that went off Oak Hill, went into Timber Ridge and then came out 9.8 road, which we no longer have. So that closed off 11 square miles right there that the BLM did. We need all these rideways open on Glade Parks so people can access it because we haven't been down since it's almost over. So why would you like Mason County to know that I'll stand behind them on anything and they need some maps that require 1976 where evidence proves that these rideways were there? You just might have to have some of those. Thank you.
Kevin K, Aloha. I struggle with our federal officials here coming forth and presenting any positive note to all this. And I just don't see it. I don't agree with it. So I'm asking the county commissioners, I'll protest all 4,000 miles right here, right now, of roads that are. I don't, it's pretty obvious why I would. But I detest the way you approach the throne over here and tell us what you're going to do. And we're the last of the year, really, at this day. You know, yeah, we have to comment publicly. Yeah, we get to do all this on stuff, you know, producers like me that give you guys jobs, I think, come here and, you know, out of the $50 billion, probably more or more that are taken out of the state of Colorado, a little bit that trickles back in there and then you come in here and tell us what you're going to do when you take all our money? I just really struggle with that. And so to come before the throne here and say this is a victory for us... And so to come before the throne here and say, “This is a victory for us,” how dare you? How dare you?
I paraphrase a little bit, but the statement goes something along the lines of tyranny is two wolves and a lamb trying to decide which for dinner. And freedom is a well-armed lamb contesting both. Thank God I can be here to contest that vote. I lost my grandfather to cancer on November 1st, 1998, the date that I still remember because he had a very special place in my life. And I bring it up because a month before he passed away, the last big memory that I have of the man who was essentially my father was gold pining out on the Dolores River and then taking him, wasting away of cancer in the deep, up over the mesa, over the mountain, calamity camp, all through there, and seeing the joy and the freedom that he felt at that moment. And I'm here to say that you guys can't close these roads down. You can't. Just remember that real freedom, if you choose to close that down, real freedom is that well-armed lamb there to contest that vote. And will be there.
Hi, my name's Pat Whelan. I'm from Loma. I've been here 15 years. But I've been out west, you know, I grew up out west. I used to be able to go anywhere. And there was no question. That's just the way it was. So I understand all the, I don't understand why we're going to try to live in jail here. But anyway, I've got a specific thing here. It's Hay Canyon. And I think that's what you're looking for. I'm not sure. You've got 4,000 miles, you've got 60% of it closed, you've got maybe 1,500 already closed, then we're talking about 300 miles. Here, it makes no sense to me. I don't know if my specific miles are in that 393, whatever it is. But Hay Canyon, if a guy tries to hunt up there, and he doesn't want to fork out five grand to pay whoever's running that thing up there beyond the lot, the big lot gate in Hay Canyon, there's a, he can't really get there. I guess he could parachute in or something, he could walk in, but it'd be hard to carry an elk out. There's a Calf Point Road, some people call it. Some people call it Ochumen. And several years ago, about around 2010, bicyclists were having a real good time dropping off the top of the ridge there, down to the tub, and then they complete the ride out to the road and get picked up. And BLM closed it, put a big sign there on the access to Hay Canyon. And now BLM's giving the back bicycles, and they've cut everybody else out except the walker. So that was our only ATV or any other type of, ATV, that's all we could get up that Ochumen Trail. But we won't have that anymore once BLM closes that. There will be thousands of acres up there at the top end of the big canyon that we as public citizens have no access to. And it's not fair. We talk about administrative roads. Well, BLM damn well should do something about administrative roads. They're locked up. It's public land, but it's locked up because somebody bought a piece of land and choked it off. And somewhere down the line, somebody let them close that road, which was a public road through there at one time, and it closes access. And so that's not right. This is, and now they've closed the other road around there. There's thousands of acres up there that we can't issue. I wrote it up when I sent in my pages the first time. BLM completely ignored that. But to a weird request, they changed it from ATV trail to a bicycle trail. So they decided they left it open. And I took my ATV up there when it's, I did it. So that's a specific instance where I think that, and I don't, like I say, I don't know if it's in the 393 miles or not. I don't know what is considered. But it's not right that those thousands of acres are locked up and nobody can carry an elk out of there. So, and the up that is in there that BLM is going to allow to drive on all those roads, they're not personally as a company running cows that may lease the land out that they've got and let them run them up there. But they have cut big zigzag roads, which you can see from Ochumen, on BLM land. So they're not only driving those roads, they're making roads up there. That's not right either. The only other thing I was, is I got a request from a friend that mentioned the Left Fork of Barrel Springs. It's a very nice place for everything to be. And I think that's up for closing. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Belinda Toth, and I'm the mother of two boys with disabilities and I've got four boys total. And let me tell you that when you close off these roads, because we'll go out for an adventure, we don't know where we're going. We don't have a destination in mind. My great-grandfather was here in the early 1900s. And they were all the way from rifle and credit and calamity mesa and calamity camp and all around. They worked wherever work was. They mined, they did all kinds of stuff. They even did a mill. So we have a lot of family history, but when we go out for an adventure, we don't even have a map most of the time. And we cannot go if he can't go. We're in a chair. And if you guys look at your census bureau, how many people, just in this county alone, are on disability? Those people are being discredited. Seriously, this is serious disqualification. Because we're basically being told, “You cannot go unless you've got two good legs and a good heart and bones and joints that can carry you well.” I want to say that we have interest in Bangs Canyon. We have interest in Ladder Canyon. Brown's Hill that goes over to Utah, we have interest in that. Again, calamity camp. My dad was in there. He lived in one of those rock houses. They called it water. So it adds historical value to us. The seasonal closures are terrible. I will, I'm not a hunter, but I will side with those guys on that. They've got to be able to manage as well. How much money does a hunter put into the state's economy? How much money does ATVs put into the economy? How many fees do bicyclists pay? Do they pay any fees at all? They're allowed to continually go places where the rest of us, we pay for, but so often, we're behind. And so you're cutting out adventure for a lot of families who have no other way to do it. Thank you.
My name is Barry Reckle. No, Reckle, not yet. Anyway, I support all the roads that BLM has closed. I support that. That's great. Why? Because I am an advocate for wildlife. And I think that the more roads we close, the better off we're going to be in terms of wildlife. What's good for wildlife? It's good for hunters. As I just mentioned, it's a good economy for the, brings a good economy for the area. So closing roads is going to benefit wildlife. And to me, we want wild places for wild things. That's what they need. So let's close our roads and increase the wildness out there in this county.
My name is Mary Herter. I'm actually a newcomer here. I've been here four years. I came out of Alaska, which has far more land, far more federal land, far more open land than any other place. And yet we still have the same problem that is here. And that is, as we get, our population grows, as we get more and more people impacting fewer and fewer places, we have to make some decisions about what to keep open and what to close, what to protect. I don't hear that they're closing every road to the waters. I hear they're closing some of them. And they're closing some of them when they're, when they're environmentally destroyed already and just need some time to rehab. But when we look at what's happened, we have bigger and greater populations of people. We have motor vehicles that are getting much more powerful and go into stretches of places that never was possible before. And yes, 15 years ago, you could go wherever you wanted to go because there wasn't this population. There also wasn't this concern for what's happening to our environment. And yes, it's happening in Alaska too. And it's happening here far faster. And I advocate looking very carefully at what's happening with our land and that as different groups access it, yes, close roads that need to be closed, open them again when you can. But just because I can't go in the form I want to go, doesn't mean that it's a good thing to leave it open. I think everyone has a right to get out there in whatever way they can, in whatever way they choose, but we don't need to have it all to one group, but there has to be a share. Thank you.
Hi, I'm J.J. Fletcher, and I just wanted to speak out for the Native Americans. I have a Native American culture in my heritage. My mother and I are American Indians, and I don't see that we're looking at that aspect of it. The Indian was here waiting for a lot of the other settlers came in here. My family came in here six generations ago in the 1880s and settled on country. They ran cattle. We hunted western Colorado. But my point is, as an American Indian, is this going to be the second time that I've pushed up to push towards a reservation? There's areas in Orchard Mesa that I ride my horse, and I have permission from Erie to ride through his orchard. And I ride responsibly. And I take that same attitude when I ride on BLM land. And that's our land, and I'm going to make sure that I ride, hunt, fish, whatever I do out there as far as recreation, I'll leave it better for the next generation. I want to make sure that my grandson, Sawyer, can employ the same things that I can do as an American citizen. But again, this was all American Indian land at one time. I guess I'm here to speak for the American Indian.
Hi, my name's Darryl Andy. But that being said, I agree with the gentleman here being good stewards of the land. You need to be careful. You need to take care of our land so it's here for generations to come. But also, at some point, we have to draw a line in the sand and say, “No further.” We have federal government telling us on our daily lives. Would you really need them telling us what lands we can, cannot be on? I say no. We need less government, not more. We need more freedom, not less. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Allen. I'm wearing my Western Slope ATV t-shirt. I had a tough decision. I'm also a Friends of the Mustang member also. So I get both sides of it. I wanted to comment on the gal from Alaska recently here. I agree with a lot of what she said. I am more in favor of having our county and our state make those decisions instead of the decisions being put into hands of the government. I can make those choices on what roads need to be closed. And just a fair, open way this hearing is being held right now gives me a lot of confidence that our county and our state can make better decisions for what's good for Colorado, Mesa County, and the federal government. In being both of those clubs, Friends of the Mustang and ATV club, I brought my scope on our federal lands out here. And in being a Friends of the Mustang member, I realize that there are a lot of wild horses out on public lands that are hundreds of thousands in captivity now because BLM budgeted. The money isn't there to maintain and take care of those animals. And I'm concerned about the money and the budget available to now be able to take care of closed roads too. I just, I'm in conflict in my mind about a budget that our native animals, Mustangs in captivity and holding, spending years in captivity, and now spending time on closing roads. I just, it's a confusion really going on. And thank you for your time.
I'm Harry Talbot, and I just left, came here after the Indians left. And I've been here a long time. I would like to say that first of all, something needs to be made clear. Who does the land belong to? It belongs to the people of Colorado. How do I know this? I know this because if you take Colorado revised statutes, there are 19 pages in the last book that show the land that has been ceded to the federal government. This land in Mesa County has not been ceded except for the post office and some other places like that. So land belongs to the citizens of Colorado. The BLM is a public services corporation that's a subdivision of the United States of America Incorporated Native. And so it's a public services corporation. A lot of what they call law is actually an extension and an overreach of public policy. And it may be rooted in some kind of law passed by Congress somewhere several steps back, but we have federal overreach everywhere. We have it in the EPA, we have it in the Corps of Engineers, who was supposed to be originally operating in navigable waters, and now they want to manage the banks of little streams in Colorado and things like that. Another thing I want to say is that the way we are organized in counties, the sheriff has a lot of power. The sheriff is elected, the sheriff takes an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado. And I think that oath can be taken seriously and it gives the sheriff a lot of power as he exercises that oath. And I know of counties in the West, I've studied this sheriff thing, I got really interested in it. There are sheriffs in the West that actually tell the federal contractors what they can and can't do in their county. And if you'll go to defendviralamerica.com, you'll see a section on sheriffs, and you can go down and you can read about these sheriffs and what they do. There are very many sheriffs that do that. And I think it's hard for a sheriff. A sheriff has to feel that he has supported the people, and our sheriff will certainly have my support in doing this. And I think a lot of the people that spoke here. And the sheriff would have to have a lot of courage and be very open to the people and use the full powers of the sheriff's office. Secondly, the commissioners have a lot of power. I think commissioners don't need to sue the federal government. They need to tell the federal government what they can and can't do in Mesa County. And so, you know, I may be.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Scott, for doing this for us. We don't get an opportunity to depress our government very often. My name's Kevin McCarty. I'm from Clint, Colorado. I'm going to follow a little bit on what Mr. Talbot just said, in that in the Enabling Act which made Colorado a state, it states specifically that the land, the public lands are held in trust for the citizens of Colorado to be returned to them in a reasonable time. for the citizens of Colorado to be returned to them in a reasonable time. Is a hundred and thirty-nine years not a reasonable time for you to return those lands to us? Question one. Question two, and this is the five-hundredth time, Gorilla, that I don't think anybody in this room wants to ask, but frankly, how can we trust you on any decision that you make when we have seen in the last six months, you go to the Thompson Divide, where there were leases for oil and gas that had been in place for years, and you broke those contracts? And you go to the Colorado Wildland Mine of in Craig, where a twenty-year agreement now is about to be broken by the federal government? An agreement entered into on all sides, and you feel free, the government feel free that you can break that contract at any time? How would we trust you that you're not going to come back and break the agreement and close these roads that we're asking you to keep open in two years or three years or five years? There is no trust for your organization or any federal organization in the West right now.
Tom Preiger, Wildland Basin candidate. I just want to tag along with what he just said. J.J., I think we're all Indians now. You guys forget what's going to do to us too, just like we did it to the Indians. I'm a, I'm kind of a number guy, I'm an engineer. And I just, just had to figure, you're talking about four thousand miles of road in a million acres. Are you kidding me? That's about five thousand acres of road. How much damage can be done by that? Very darn little, because the zero-action option says there's very little impact. So why are we even thinking about this? What is the purpose? What is the real core purpose behind this? What is the federal government? What is the BLM? What are they trying to take away from us and protect by doing this? They're not trying to protect from us. We're the best stewards of the land if they are, not the federal government. They're not stewards.
Hi, my name is Mike Arlo. Been here about fifteen years and been run for sheriff. My main concern was what happened at the Bunge Ranch. It was horrible, to say the least. And the first people pointing guns was the BLM. That was nipped in the bud, not because of any action by BLM. There was great restraint shown by militias. You know, those crazy people with the guns, we've been hearing so much about? Those loose cannons? Nobody got shot, but a round, it was close. And that was my main reason to run for sheriff. The sheriffs are, well, they've formed up an association of constitutional sheriffs. But I think that's great. I totally support that. It's constitution. And the federal government is getting very unconstitutional. And they're supporting an unconstitutional Washington government. And I'm not going to go into that. It's too long. We don't have enough time. But I talk to people. I'm a holster maker, so I talk to a lot of gun people. I'm a gun enthusiast. I shoot a lot. And wherever I go, you know, conversations start. Well, if they come for your guns, what are you going to do? That's always the same answer. You don't want to be the person showing up to collect the guns. And the same thing, this, this land closure, I don't have much experience with it, but one time I wanted to go see the Colorado River by Rabbit Valley. And they got that trail up in beautiful, beautiful. Had a good time. I got close enough to smell the river, but then there was a chain that said, oh, too much impact. And it was a white Dodge BLM coming out, and I flagged them down. I asked them, what's going on? Oh, too much impact. Oh, really? And I just, I don't know, I thought about that for a while. The name of that river is the Colorado River, not the Federal River. I'm Colorado, and I can't go to the Colorado River because someone in the federal government said so. I, I think that's got to stop. Thank you.
Random sick rate, just a few comments and some of the things that we said in my name a couple of times. Number one, I said I'm okay with it. Okay, in fact, I don't think any of us would be here if we were talking a fifteen to twenty percent closure rate. You know, with the exception of maybe some high-value recreational routes. The BLM got permanent authority after Clinton was passed in nineteen seventy-six. So, you know, if you're talking about a route that was built after that, they actually have the right to close it. Prior to that is when we have a legal argument, and that's when we talk about RS-2477. Some people talked about hunting and more animals. Mesa County is a top-five Boonycroft, Boonycroft and Polignan County for Colorado for here now. Okay, so we have trophy animals here. We have extra cow tags because our elk herds are too big. In the eighties, we probably had twenty to thirty percent war routes, and now, I forget about all the roads the Forest Service has been closing for decades. And we have record deer herds. Okay, so there's science on both sides of this, as far as the impacts of the animal. FOIA, Public Land Access Association, I did a FOIA request about a month ago for the BLM. We got six or seven access easements that the BLM paid for in the sixties and seventies, usually four to six hundred dollars. One of the routes goes up Canacree. And so we're getting that information to be bare right now. And it's my opinion that they didn't even check their own access easements when they decided to start doing these closures. So we paid for the access easements, and, and nobody knew about it because they get forgotten over time. So we're doing a FOIA request for the FOIA Forest Service right now. Multi-use, you know, I've been really involved with this for three years. And I can tell you that one of my biggest disappointments has been the public and the various organizations involved. So we're supposed to be protecting multi-use here, which means multi-use for everybody. But we're a greedy country. And so we hear a lot of people arguing about more single-track, more less than fifty-inch, more horse trails. And for the most part, we're talking about converting a Jeep or truck route to a single-track or to a mountain bike trail instead of having a true multi-use spirit, which is, hey, if it's a legal right of way, why can't we all use it? So one of my biggest disappointments has been from us, the public, in this process. As a guy that's given presentations on jurisdiction, I've heard several people make comments, I wouldn't say in a threatening fashion, but I can tell you this. The federal government has the public lands in Mesa County, ninety-nine percent of them are held in proprietary lands only. In two thousand and one, the state ceded concurrent jurisdiction over the Colorado National Monument. That being said, the federal government still has police authority over your actions, especially if they damage federal property. So I wouldn't get the idea that tearing down a gate's a good idea. Somebody mentioned somebody else's name that tried to do that. The federal government does not mess around when you do that. And if you damage federal property, the county can't help you. Nobody can help you. You're on your own. Because they do have police powers when it comes to that type of deal. And also, I've researched a lot of the stuff as far as what sheriffs are doing, what I can tell you, less than two percent of sheriffs are standing up against the federal government. So I don't think it's really fair, and I know of none in western Colorado. It's not really fair for us to point at our sheriff and expect him to do something that less than two percent of sheriffs are actually doing. So I think we have to be reasonable, we have to know the facts. But we, most part, we have to work with our county commissioners and our sheriff before anybody thinks about doing anything. Two, in the direction of civil disobedience. Thank you.
My name is Darryl Stafford, retired Master Chief of the US Navy, thirty years. Through Vietnam and Gulf War Number One. I've got a lot of family set here. We were raised in this country. Our mother and dad was raised in this country. He had built the Colorado National Monument for the CCCs. I have several questions I would like to ask. Why does the public have to prove that we need to keep the road open? Why does that road need to be closed? I know they closed a lot of roads. I've seen roads over on Brush Ridge and Eppa Pogry. Closed roads, you couldn't get this whole area where you, I've never seen too many elk out there, but I like to get up there and that downhill. And I had fishing game guy, or a forest service guy come up because he's part of the forest service, and I was in the BLM. And me and this other seventy-year-old guy, actually he was eighty and I was seventy-seven, said, we close this road for you, take it up with your, with your four-wheeler. You can hike up them big people's, you're pretty good for my age. You go up there and kill an elk, and you're going to bring that out across four miles of country at seventy-eight or eighty years old? That didn't seem like he had closed them roads for me. The other thing I have is, I know I belong to the group back past years for public access lands. And it seemed that one time, we had the state attorney general and the fishing game working with us to keep these roads open for our hunting and stuff. And I thought they had opened them on the Haight Canyon. I heard a lot a while ago about, a lot of that wasn't open anymore. They spent a lot of money, the state attorney general and us worked hard to get a lot of these, they were public roads, back open. And the biggest problem was private owners coming in buying forty-eight acre, acre land right in the middle of a public road and locking the gates like we talked about a while ago here. What penalties do you put on one of them individuals that limits our access by blocking the public road so we can't get to our public ground? That's my main points. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jerry Smith. I've lived here quite a number of years and have done a heck of a lot of four-wheeling around here. Do a certain amount of hiking and everything else. But I want to speak a little bit for people I don't think have been very well represented here. We've had a few people that have touched on it, and that's out-of-state hunters. We've all heard, you know, that there's big numbers of dollars that get spent here every year by out-of-state hunters. How in this whole process have they been really recognized or even given the opportunity to be recognized when they don't live here, they don't know what's going on here in the local area? And without that representation, we're finding, you know, that there's guys that have been living here, their families have been here for generations and generations. So their culture and their heritage to this thing isn't being represented at all. And I think that that needs to be remedied. Pardon my commentary, Officer R.M.P. had to do with that. That there shouldn't be some kind of a recognition that if you're going to close an area or a trail, there should be some kind of a warning put up on that trail for at least two years so that people who come here from out-of-state have a clue of what's going on, but they don't know until they find that closure sign on there. So we need to recognize, you know, where a lot of our economy comes from in a positive direction. We need to be showing a lot more latitude toward what they would want rather than what they're getting. Thank you.
My name is Todd Mickelson. I am, and they've almost been four years, it'll be good four years tomorrow. My concern is we have never gotten more public land. We keep losing public land in just trade or swap or something like that. We've never got more pretty open space. We keep losing it. Not in personal interest from the end of it, but I lost some prime hunting area to be able to get my dad into when that area behind the monument was made a wilderness area. That made me really sad. And it must, my father got older in Parkinson's. I couldn't get him out very much to do any shooting or hunting. I would like to see us work to getting more access for not only motorized vehicles, but bicycles, horses. Why can't we make more trails for everybody? The BLM gives the golden shovel to the bike groups if they go out and they cut a trail, and then they say, hey, we want to get this open, because I've seen them do it the last three or four years. And the press is out there, wow, this is a great new bike trail we opened. I don't see that with motorized vehicles. With quiet space, there's thousands of wilderness acres out there. Everybody's more than welcome to go out and access. I can go hunting and go out there and I'll walk half a mile from my vehicle that I drive in on, and it's quiet. I can mount a bike in on other trails, on BLM or Forest Service, get off, it's quiet. It's not like it isn't out there. We need to quit getting stuff taken away from us, our privileges or our pride as American citizens, and give it back more to us to be able to use it no matter what our abilities or disabilities are. We need to keep the lands open. Thank you.
My name is Rick Webb. I have a medical four-year-old place, White Park, Fall River, Mesa. Been with me years, moved here in nineteen seventy-six. Former firefighter, inspired blue tier, retired out on loan damage. Former Marine. When I got here, first of all, I, I, hang on, all these people that they said, I agree with everything they said. So I'm going to go to different places. When I moved here, I felt free here. There are free certificates of ownership. I took my horse and team and built them in Rabbit Valley. I did rent ones, didn't rent anything, didn't hurt anything, rode as stewards of the land. The trails I drive today, forty years later, look the same as I did when I was here forty years ago. So this is no damage. Wildlife, abundant wildlife, more now than ever. Those turkeys. I no longer feel free here. It's coming in, it's approaching animal freedoms. And a former Marine is truly deeply suited in my heart to be free. And that's what I hate to see, is the big government slowly approaching all our feelings. So I hope that all of you see, everyone is little inches of, 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 of freedom. It's crucial to fight back. And that's my, my take. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cam Deemer, and I've been here in Valley for twenty-one, twenty-two years. One of the things that I think that we're, we've got to focus on is there's three hundred and ninety-three miles of trails here that we're talking about. And a lot of this, from what I heard earlier, the BLM does not have really any choice as far as closing or, or opening. I mean, the, the land going up into the wilderness study area, that's, the BLM really does not have a choice but to, to close those. Land that's closed, that's completely encircled by private property. I don't agree with it being completely encircled by private property, but that's the way it is. It is. Close those lands in their affairs, they're really, the trails in there, we don't have any access to it anyway. For the most part, it's, it's basically going to protect the rights of those landowners, whether we like that or not. They are still the landowners, and they have rights as well. So it's just going to do much, think about more, protect those rights for those landowners. So there's also trails, Sarlock Trail was brought up with the Sarlock Trail. There's another trail right beside it that's going to be closed. We've got a great brand-new trail, that's ATB Motorcycle Accessible. And the trail that is not such a good location is, is going to be closed. I really don't see that that's going to be an issue for places like that. I totally agree with a lot of the ATB riders here that these are our lands. At the same point, our lands need to be, be taken care of the best as possible. And BLM seems to have been working towards this with numerous public meetings that we've had. There's been lots of reasons, of times for comments already. The BLM has a job to do, and this meeting here tonight is, is nothing more than, it's, it's, the BLM has a job to do. And this is kind of getting in the way of moving forward on what needs to happen as far as our public lands go. So I, I'm in support of the BLM decision. Thank you.
My name is Harry Madison. I'm here to meet up with my neighbor Max Carhartt. Max is a noted geologist, pretty active in the community here. And he's kind of representing what's probably... And he's kind of representing what probably the head of the stepchild of oil and gas industry. I promise that I'm, I'm agree with this letter that he wrote, so, as such. I oppose closing any roads or trails inhabitable by the BLM. Simple fact that road trail exists is evidence of the need for the roads to have been built originally. Nineteen fifty-three, sixty-two years ago, I was assigned by my employer to map the geological structure of the Piana Basin. It was our practice to drive up the canyon trail where as far as possible, and walk up the top of the drainage to buy it. Mapping as we traveled the next day and the next drainage, we were very, we very much appreciated those existing roads. Our mapping resulted in the drilling of several gas wells whose production has required many workers and resulted in payment of royalty on gross return to miller rights owners. Colorado Perseverance Tax, financed with Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, the county, the country cap, low lower in tax, non-production revenue, those property tax on items such as tanks, pumps, pipelines, etc., often an overriding royalty is payable. This production has provided us with electricity, heat, and gasoline for our birth of lifestyle. What more can we ask the roads and trails of the Piana Basin? Why spend money to obliterate roads and trails that are not curving? Leave them alone. Max Craig.
I know I've had a turn, but I thought a couple of other teams out, just make it good. First of all, I hope that what's being said here does carry some weight, and this is not just an exercise we're going through that really doesn't mean anything, which so often, I think, a lot of people feel like, you let us have our say, but you do what you want anyway. So, I hope that you do take heart for what people have said here. Secondly, I have a conflict in my mind that there's always talk about preserving wilderness areas, and yet there is a huge push to make the Colorado National Monument a national park to bring in more tourists. I had five bighorn sheep trot across the road right in front of my car last week. It was fairly low in the elevation, it was this side of the tunnel, I drove that road almost every day, twice a day. And yet there is bicycle races promoted, foot races promoted, tourism promoted, protection of what is there, the wildlife and the beauty is not done. And so, I, I, it seems like people are talking out of both sides of their mouth. On the one hand, you wanna protect these wilderness areas that very few people go to, but let's bring in the rest of the world to see the beauty of the monument. And I just don't get that. Sorry. I just, it is difficult. But at what cost? At what cost? So, I hope that you will see the contradiction that's going on.
My name is Jeff Allright, and we've been to quite a few meetings, and so far, it just seems like it's an effort of utility, because we say something to the BLM and they say, "Well, this is a twenty-year mandate, we're gonna do it regardless." Problem of it is, then we have too many special interest organizations that stand up and say, "Well, if I can't walk on that trail, you shouldn't be able to drive on it," or whatever. We had the Sierra Close Show at some of the meetings, we had Grandmas Against, or for pristine wilderness. The world, we got plenty of room for everybody, it's supposed to be a land of many uses. In other words, we should be able to get along with bike riders, I get along with four-wheelers, I get along with people that walk, I get along with people. You wave at a lot of people, it's like, "You're not on a bicycle buddy, you're in trouble." I'm sorry, this is supposed to be our land. We come to these meetings, we try to have a compromise, but we're not talking two-three-hundred acres, we're talking two-thousand acres or so, because I've looked at the maps, and you know, you say, "Well, these roads are being overused." If you close half of them down, do you think the rest of them aren't gonna be way overused? You can't maintain, if you can't maintain the ones we have now, then what makes me think that you could maintain after we've closed most of them? Now the traffic is increased by three-hundred percent. I mean, I've been to the mountains, it's already increased. And I hate to see it close more and more trails down, and then it just increases the amount of people that's gonna be on the existing roads. Why can't we all get along? As every organization should be able to say, "Hey, if you wanna walk on that trail, if you wanna ride on that trail, great," instead of just everybody looking and saying, "I wanna be because I'm a special interest, I wanna be pristine for me." I'm saying, "It's all our land, and we need to keep it." BLM, our land.
Hi, my name's Shelley Hatch. I'm actually a new resident of Colorado, I'm originally from Utah, but I just spent two years in West Virginia. Do you know how much public land is in West Virginia? Zero. Thirty-six state parks, it costs you about ten to twenty dollars to get into each state park. Pennsylvania has a hundred-and-twenty-one state parks. How much public land do they have? Zero. Do you know why we moved to Colorado? We came back here to have our free public lands that we can get ten minutes on the mountain, enjoy our evening. We have a family, we raise a family, and I'm sure all of you do. You know, we hunt, the reason that we hunt is so we can feed our children for the whole winter. We send food with our college kids to school, we support our children too, using the public lands. You know, I don't envy your jobs that you guys have, it's a tough, tough decision to do this, to stand up for our people's rights, but that's what you guys are elected for. You are elected for the people to stand up for our rights and help us as a community grow, as a state grow. Let's keep our public lands. Utah's fighting for their public lands, they're winning. Now I come to Colorado, I would love to come to Colorado and see them win and fight for their public lands so we can continue this down for the years to come, to, you know, to enjoy our public lands. Granted, I understand that, I'm a Jeep-er, we go in our truck, we go on the mountain. Do you think it's really us desecrating the ground, you know, as we go up? We don't go up a muddy, a muddy lane, you know, go up a muddy creek, you know, I mean, we stop, we take care of our lands, we pick up garbage, you know, we pick up more garbage going up a trail than I've ever seen anywhere. It's amazing how many bags of garbage and stuff that we can do. It's not always us. It could be a hiker, it could be a biker. We bike, we hike, we have a Jeep, we have a four-wheeler, we have all that too. But you know why? It's because we love our public land and we love to be here. And I'm grateful that I came to the state of Colorado, and I hope you guys can help us support this by keeping our public lands open. This will be our last speaker for the, the open portion, and I want to give people time to look at the maps and conclude, we have to close this building at eight, so.
I just want to acknowledge the handicap that, nobody's mentioned how hard it is for them to get out in the woods. And also, as far as the wildlife, I didn't want to play park, and it's unbelievable how much the wildlife for having trees. I never see there at my house like I do now. I see elk at my place that I never seen before, and deer herds are coming back. I worked in the oil field, and I watched the animal herds grow, I see bear up on the skis poles in the summer. The animals are not that afraid of people like a lot of people think. And they do blend in with the wildlife, and that's all I'm saying. Plus, I'm handicapped, and if it wasn't for my four-wheeler and my truck, I'd be screwed. And a lot of old people cannot ride four-wheelers, they have to go in a vehicle. So, please, don't close those roads if they're existing, I agree with that guy, there's a reason there was a road there, start with it. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here today. I have Pete Bear to just give us, give you some information on what county resources we have put towards this effort on dealing with the road issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Policee. Again, my name's Pete Bear, I'm the Public Works Director for Mason County. As many of you are aware, we've been working on this issue for numerous years, in particular the last two to three years have been very heavy work-related issues on this with staff and such. And I want to reiterate again that we do have staff available. If somebody's confused as to whether a route's open or not, or a thing that, you can come in on Tuesday and Thursday afternoon, I'll give you a phone number, but it's also all over two-four-four-seventeen-six-five. Call it, we'll get you a staff member to sit with you, we can look at particular routes, we can go through the reasoning. You know, I, I do give BLM credit in the sense of they, with the vast amount of data, I mean, there's, with four thousand miles of broken into segments, as you can imagine, huge amount of data and having it through to, to really pinpoint to a certain area or a certain thing. That being said, I do want to commend that many of the public already has brought forward, the PLA in particular, and others have brought forward pertinent documents and certain, pertinent pieces that we then bring to the commissioners and say, "Here's our recommendation on certain routes and roads to bring forward to the BLM for discussion." So, I'm gonna continue to encourage, I, I heard a couple folks say they may have earlier maps from pre-nineteen seventy-six, which I won't go into whole Flicker thing, but if you have data that you think is pertinent, please get it to us at Public Works, we will then make sure that it gets through to our attorney's office and, and to our discussions with the commissioners on these particular routes. And I would say whether it's one of the three-ninety-three or if it's something else that you have, bring it to us, we will then move through it and dissect and go through there. And as Commissioner Policee said, they, the commissioners have been great and have made every attempt, and we held a series of public meetings along the last couple of years, a big huge one at the background, some gave me some reverses, trying to get this, this is a very complicated component because of the sheer amount of data in there. So, I would say, if you've got particular data, you've got particular interest, or you just wanna come in and see, please get hold of us, we'll set an appointment. I can guarantee you that if we get overwhelmed with appointments based on this here, I would just simply have to go to the commissioners and they would easily allow me to add more staff time, more hours into that. So, this is a high, high priority for them. They've tasked us with gathering as much information, pertinent information as we can for that. So, I'm just here again to reiterate that, reiterate that we're there. Give us a call, it's both on the website, it's basically called Versus, remember that. Call in, say you want an appointment, we'll set that appointment up. We've got folks that can navigate through this very quickly and get right to an area. I heard like, "Hey Canyon, you wanna come see what's there? For sure? Come look, we'll, we'll pull it right up." And then we have a comment sheet that you can fill out that we will take into our comments. The, the status we have as, as Mason County is, as mentioned, as a cooperating agency, so we do have some ability to take your comments and make sure that they get to the proper place. That being said, I'll just reiterate what Patrick said, in the same sense, we have not given up any rights to push forward on, on other bear speeds as we go through here, but we are working this process, and we do have resources set up to take your comments. So, that's all I wanted to say. As was mentioned, there are boards out there, there are some comment sheets, the boards are attempting to show the three-hundred-and-ninety-three miles and the hundred-and-seventy-eight-plus miles that were talked about, and so you know which ones are being deferred for later decisions and which ones are on the table right now of those three-ninety-three for closure. So, anyway, those are there, but as I said, if you want more individual, please come in, we'll set somebody with you and look particularly at the area we're going in.
Did you, I thought you were gonna give a dollar amount of resources spent, or is that, is that what I took that as?
I...
You had a dollar amount?
I don't think we were prepared to give a dollar amount or anything like that.
I just heard we didn't have any more resources available, so does that mean time, does that mean money, what does that mean?
Nobody sent that.
Yeah, no, no.
None of us have sent that.
No, what we're saying is the exact opposite, we have resources available for any information.
I think he's telling you to make more resources for us to be able to fix.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, you have to think about, what I was saying is if there's pure, if there's a lot of overwhelming public, that would overwhelm the current resources identified, we will get more to make sure we get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for being here, please look at the maps, and if you have comments or anything you wanna talk to us about, we're here. Thank you.